Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December 3, 2020 edition of the Plastow Zoning Board of Adjustment. We have a few hearings tonight. Dee, would you call the roll, please?
Peter Bealow.
I'm here.
And you're remote?
And I'm remote, and I'm by myself, except for three Christmas wreaths.
Dan Lloyd.
I'm here, remote, alone.
John Blynn.
I'm here, remote, alone.
Jonathan Gifford is excused. Gary Ingham.
Attending remotely, no others present.
Jim Unger.
I am here, remote, and alone in this room.
I just got an email from Barb Barry that just let me know that she got hauled into a work meeting, and she apologizes.
That's okay. We have a full five-member board, so no worries.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Okay.
Yep, you're fine.
Okay. So before we start the meeting, I need to read out, well, something that the state says we have to read out. "The Plastow Zoning Board of Adjustment due to the COVID-19/coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically, and these reasons shall be reflected in the minutes. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, we are confirming that we are: A) Providing public access to the meeting by telephone. Members of the public wishing to attend this meeting electronically may call the following conference call number: 1-562-247-8422, access code 900-532-276. B) Additional public access by video or other electronic means will be available as follows. We are using the GoToWebinar platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through the GoToWebinar platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, or they wish, participate in this meeting by clicking on the following webinar address: C) Providing public notice of the necessary information and accessing the meeting. Legal notice was sent to all the butters for each application, and it was published in the Eagle Tribune newspaper with information on how to access the meeting. D) Providing a mechanism for the public, for the public, to alert the public body during the meeting that a member of the public wishes to speak or be recognized during any public comment or public hearing. The GoToWebinar platform has both a "Raise Your Hand" and "Q&amp;A" feature that allows attendees to alert that they have a question. Please note that all questions submitted through the Q&amp;A feature must contain your address and will be read into the record. E) Other access to the meeting. The meeting will also be broadcast on the Plastow Access Cable Channel 17. It will be livestreamed on the town website at www.plastow.com. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting by a conference call or GoToWebinar, the meeting will be adjourned and be rescheduled at a later time. Capisce? Right. Before we go any further, you know, I note that Member John Gifford is absent tonight, so in his stead, we are making Jim Unger, one of the alternates, a voting member for the evening. Kayle? Dr. Ingham, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic, our own stand.
Under God.
For the nation of liberty, justice for all. You know, out of all the GoToMeetings I've been attending where we have to go do this, this is the one, this is the one part of the meeting that just doesn't go that smoothly. It's tough to synchronize people through any of these things. So I apologize to the public who thinks we're totally inept for this. First order of business is reorganization, election of officers. So we were actually supposed to have done this back in September. Frankly, I missed it, and that's, all this is on me. You guys can crucify me as much as you wish. For dragging my office out for a month-plus extra. So tonight, let's do that. Dee, why don't you run this part of it?
Are there any nominations for Chair of the Plastow Zoning Board?
I make a motion, nominate all offices as stands at this point in time going forward in the future.
Want to reappoint the slate? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
So that would mean who seconded?
Yep, I second the motion.
So what you're saying in short is, for whatever silly reason you want me to carry on as Chair and Dan as Vice Chair?
Yes.
Yes, sir, correct.
I don't ask you a reason.
The silly reason is they don't want to be the Chair or Vice Chair.
I guess. Just for, just for future reference, would that change at all if we renamed Dan's office as Chair of Vice?
Let's move this meeting along. Come on.
Are there any other nominations?
Alfred Belton, Peter Bealow.
Stain.
Dan Lloyd.
Stain.
John Blynn.
Yes.
Gary Ingham.
Yes.
Jim Unger.
Yes.
Your vote is 3-0-2, and the slate of offices is up for another year.
Well, almost a year. We'll do it next September. Promise. Okay, um, let's take a look at the minutes from last meeting. Would somebody make a motion on them?
I'll make a motion to accept minutes.
Seconded.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Gary.
Thank you.
Are we ready to take a vote, or are you guys reading them?
No, we're ready.
I'm ready.
Dee, please call the vote.
Dan Lloyd.
Yes.
John Blynn.
Yes.
Gary Ingham.
Yes.
Jim Unger.
Yes.
Peter Bealow.
Yes.
Vote is 5-0-0.
Okay, why don't we call the first case, first hearing?
The first, actually, two are interrelated. We have a request for an extension of a two-year deadline to exercise or lose a variance approval. These are cases from 2018, 18-1, a request from Jason Centenary for a variance from Article 5, Section 22032i, to permit a 30-by-50 equipment storage structure to be constructed 22.9 feet from the rear property line, where 50 feet is the minimum allowed setback. Property is located at 73 Newton Road, tax map 68 Lot 12 in the ICR District. Cassett Holdings LLC is the property owner of record. The second variance that was granted was a request for a variance from Article 5, Section 22032i, to permit a 30-by-50 equipment storage building to be constructed 47.4 from the front property line, where 50 feet is the minimum for the same property location. This is basically just a request to extend. The variance is now, if they're not exercised within two years of approval, they expire, and the applicant loses the benefit of having that variance.
Right.
There's a letter that was given to the board with a request.
It was. Would you read it into the record, please?
Had to find it, sorry. Dear Mr. Bealow, thank you for allowing us to properly plan and eventually execute the construction of the proposed storage shed. We are requesting a two-year extension of the variance. Frankly, moving forward with the construction was a function of cash flow for a relative, a related business that resides at 73 Newton Road. With intent to begin site preparation earlier this year, we tabled the investment following a four-month consecutive period of little to no revenue in 2020. Ultimately, we need the storage structure to efficiently support operations. However, we are beginning to rebuild the business and do not see available funds for at least six to 12 months. Our goal, if financials allow, is to begin site preparations in spring of 2021 and complete end of 2021. However, our revenue stream fluctuations are affecting accurate predictions. Thus, the two-year extension is requested and greatly appreciated. Kindly accept this request for extension, and it's signed by Jason Centenary.
So we can either, I don't think we should rehear the whole case for a variance. I think this is, you know, we've.
You're just deciding the extension.
Right, so we're not going to go through the five criteria on this.
No.
In fact, we don't even really have to go hear testimony. Actually, actually, no, I think we need to do that. We need to at least ask if there's anybody out there speaking in favor or against this.
I do not see anybody with a hand raised or that I know to be related to this application.
Okay, okay. So let me formally ask, is there anybody speaking in favor of this? Give it 10, 15 seconds. Is there anybody speaking against this extension?
I would respectfully ask that the board at least have a discussion on whether or not additional extensions of this deadline will be granted, or if this is a one-shot deal.
Absolutely. I was just letting people weigh in first, okay, if there was anybody out there.
I see no hands at all.
Okay, what's the thought of the other board members here? Dan?
I don't find any issue with extending it. I mean, like I say, they came in front of us two years ago. Wasn't an issue. Like I say, with 2021, with 2020 being what it's been, those folks, like everybody else, business-wise, numbers are just off, so I can sympathize with them wanting to hold off until they have the monies to move forward.
John?
I'm just curious, were the butters notified again?
Yes, they were.
They were? Okay.
Yes, in fact, I heard from one of them, who had a couple of questions that I was able to answer procedurally, questions, that I was able to answer for them.
All right, I agree with Dan. I think under the circumstances, I think granting it would, I'd be in favor of that. It's been a tough year for any businessperson.
Yeah, and I could see that as, I could see that as well. Would somebody make a motion on this?
I make a motion that we grant a two-year extension.
Oh, I was looking for the discussion on the, whether or not this would be a one-time deal, so it could be added as a condition.
Oh, okay.
Will you make a motion, Mr. Chair?
Look, let me, let me do the motion, John, okay? I move to grant the request for a two-year extension of the deadline to exercise the granted variances in ZB A matters number 18-01 and numbers 18-02 with the following conditions: The new expiration date shall be March 29, 2020, two years from the original approval, and no further extensions of the deadline will be granted if we decide to grant it at all.
Second the motion.
So the deadline would be March 29, 2022?
2022.
Okay.
Dee, where are you?
I'm here.
Okay, we're not seeing it.
I know.
Yeah. Okay, we all ready to vote?
Yes.
Dee, would you call it?
John Blynn.
Yes.
Gary Ingham.
Yes.
Jim Unger.
Yes.
Peter Bealow.
Yes.
Dan Lloyd.
Yes.
I'm sorry, who was the second on that motion?
Gary.
I was.
Thank you.
Okay, that's 5-0-0, I believe.
5-0-0 is correct.
Okay. Dee, before we go on to the next item, I want to hold up here just for half a second or two. I'd like this board to recognize that as of September, I believe, 18th, not September, what is this, December, December 18, 2020, Dee Boss will have been a town employee for 20 years. And for most, if not all, of that time, she's been, I think, ably supporting the ZBA, keeping us out of trouble, taking awesome minutes, and has been a very good advisor for us and person in the Building Inspector's Office originally, and now in the Planning Office.
Thank you, that's very kind.
Okay. Mike, we tried very hard to get Mike Dormin into this meeting. He wanted to say some words also, but given that he only runs a Chromebook, he has some software issues, it was just Dean couldn't find a way. He was very anxious to be in the meeting. I would hope, I would hope that the selectmen would note this anniversary on their December 14 meeting. Gee, who do we know who's a selectman?
Um, just left. Peter, could I just add to that?
Sure.
I just want to thank Dee for all her help, and I don't know how we'd function without you, Dee.
Now you know why I turned the camera off.
You didn't know this was coming.
I'm blushing. Thank you very much. Thank you, that's very kind. I appreciate your kind words, I really do. This is my favorite board. It's always been my favorite board, and this particular makeup of the board is particularly a favorite of mine, so I really appreciate the opportunity to work with all of you.
Well, feelings mutual.
Yeah. On you for a lot of things, and you've always been there to answer my questions, and I definitely appreciate it.
Okay, let's move on, because I'm like blushing red now. Let's just move on.
Okay. Okay, we do have a couple more hearings, but I should say a potential for a couple more hearings. Dee, would you call the next hearing, not the two together, just the next hearing?
I understand. Case number 20-31, a request from J&R Realty Trust, Jeffrey Raymond trustee, for a variance from Article 5, Section 22032B, to permit a contractor's storage yard with conditions of no outside storage of materials visible and no outside storage of heavy vehicles, including bulldozers, front-end loaders, and backhoes. Property is located at 190 Plastow Road, tax map 44, Lot 2, in the C1 District. The applicant is the property owner of record. Give me just a moment to unmute these folks.
Okay, and who will be speaking to us this evening?
Mr. Zilch, would you like to unmute yourself, please? There you go.
I think I just did.
You're all set now, thank you.
Can anybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. I'm also here, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if everybody can hear me. Attorney Peter Nacocia on behalf of the applicant.
Excuse me, before we start, could I just ask for everybody's name and where they're from? I'll start, I have a list here, so let me start at the top. I have Charlie Zilch.
Charlie Zilch from SCC and Associates.
Then I have Jeff Raymond here, but he's muted. Senator Nacocia?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming you have no video feed from where we are. My webcam is on, but I don't see myself on the screen.
No, because of this particular format, we're limited to how many squares, Brady Bunch squares, as we call them, we can have on the screen.
So what you're telling me is I wore a tie for nothing, and I can take that off right now?
Well, if it makes you feel any better, I'd be perfectly happy to go off-camera and give you my square.
There's one more spot where that we can add him to.
Oh, that's true, too.
Hold up here.
No.
He's in the background.
Mr. Nacocia, who are you with?
I am, I am by myself right now, but I represent the applicant.
No, I mean, I understand you're an attorney. What firm are you with?
Nacocia and Associates is the name of the firm.
Thank you very much.
Has a certain ring to it.
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay.
Also, just to let you know that Code Enforcement Officer Peter Blanchett is on the line as well.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Blanchett, we, it's good to meet you virtually. Congratulations on coming to Plastow.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. It's nice to see you all, and I guess virtually meet you all also. Thank you for inviting me.
Mr. Chairman, when you're ready, I could just kind of take everybody through this?
Yes, please.
Okay, when everybody's ready?
We're ready.
Go ahead. All right, again, Charlie Zilch from SCC and Associates. I'm here working with Peter Nacocia, who just introduced himself on behalf of J&R Realty Trust, Jeff Raymond, the principal owner of the property, and then as well as the intended business, who is the tenant of the property, can be J&R Gutters, Inc., owned by John Raymond. Here on behalf of their request for variance. The subject site, I think everybody has a copy of the plan set. Subject site is identified in Town Tax Maps as Map 44, Lot 2, located at 190 Plastow Road at Old County Road. For reference, the site is basically directly across from MB Tractor and Equipment on Old County Road. Old House, I think everybody's kind of familiar with the site. If you could just maybe direct your attention to sheet two of the plan set.
Give me a moment.
As you can see, you've got a site plan in front of you that we had prepared. We're also in hopes of getting that resubmitted back to the planning board, but for now, it'll suffice for your reference.
Okay.
Basically, on that sheet two, there we go, wonderful, thank you, Dee. This is an existing residentially utilized site located in the commercial one zone. Currently, the site supports single-family dwelling that's now vacant. I think everybody's quite familiar with it. And this is supported by access from both Old County Road and Route 125. You see those two curb cuts there. So the lot is about 1.1 acres. It's comprised of two old lots of record that have been merged. It leaves you about 271 feet of frontage on the west side of Route 125, and then you've got about 100 feet of frontage on the south side of Old County Road. You see kind of a L-shaped parcel, a little over an acre. So if you want to take a look at sheet three to follow along, I'll give you a second to get there. The intent of the plan is to convert the site from the residential use to a commercial use, specifically John's siding and roofing company, J&R Gutters. The plan is to raise the existing dwelling, and then in its place, construct a two-story, 1,120-square-foot office building within that existing footprint, and then right behind that, the proposed office space, you'll see a one-and-a-half-story, 3,400-square-foot warehouse building. Right now and in the future, an onsite well and septic system will serve the needs of the building. So John's company will utilize the site as their main base of operations, and this will feature that office space, complete with a showroom and display area. So this is going to be his predominant space here. So additionally, he'll utilize the warehouse space that we're planning behind the office building for storage of materials that he doesn't currently have, so this will help him out, and he won't need any outside storage. So he'll be able to contain everything within that big generous warehouse area. The site, as you can see on that sheet, also will support all the vehicles that John needs that are associated with his daily operations. This includes space for about 14 employees at full build-out, projected build-out, as well as all the company vehicles, and that includes, you know, the regular service vehicles. They'll have some trailers, man lifts, and lulls. They won't have any heavy equipment such as bulldozers, front-end loaders, backhoes, just the vehicles necessary to support the trade, so lighter commercial vehicles that you would typically associate with this trade. So the access, as I said, is, you'll have two-way in from Old County, two-way out onto 125. Both accesses have been provided with aprons as constructed during the recent highway reconstruction renovation. You can also see there's plenty of parking, maneuvering, loading space provided throughout. If we could just take a look at sheets four and five. Particularly on sheet five. Excuse me. So there was, we'll be able to buffer this site pretty well, as required by the town site plan regulations. So we'll be able to put buffers around the residential use, which is that one property up on Old County Road, and then lighter buffers around the remaining commercial uses. So it's not that we've, you know, got this site a capacity. We still got plenty of room for nice buffers to separate from the commercial use to the residential use. But also, as you can see, we put together a pretty comprehensive drainage design, so we'll be able to contain all the stormwater runoff onsite, keep it there, treat it, maintain it, and not disrupt any of the budding properties. We've got infiltration trenches at the edge of the parking areas, as well as a nice big infiltration basin to capture all of that. So in all, the business that John has works really well for the site. It's a nice location for him. He really wants to feature the showroom, that office space. It's got great exposure to 125, obviously. And you can do all this with very little to no impact with the, with your budding properties. So I think it's a nice site for him. It works well. So as I mentioned, I'm working with Attorney Peter Nacocia on the application, and that's what the proposal is for the site. I'll let Peter kind of jump in here and kind of explain why we're here before you guys and what it is that we're seeking for relief on this. Any questions before I turn it over to Peter about the site or what we're intending to do with the site?
Or anybody?
No, I'm out of this time.
Okay, we understand.
Okay, I'll let Pete jump in then, if he's available. Thank you, Charlie, for that. Thank you. First, let me say also congratulations to Dee on her 20 years serving the board. That's a great accomplishment, so congratulations to you. I gave you a five-page, you know, letter that supported the application, which kind of articulates all of the nitty-gritty arguments as it relates to the five requirements for the finding of the variance. So I'm gonna spare you in terms of regurgitating that right now, chapter and verse. However, I do want to generally discuss, you know, some of the major points of that. And a lot of these points overlap in one or more of those five variance findings that you're required to make a.
that you're required to, to make a determination on. So the reason why we're here is we started the site planning process and then the planning board in its normal course asked for a zoning determination from the building inspector. And the building inspector, you know, in general terms, took a look at it and said, you know what? I think this fits into the contractor's yard definition versus a trade business. And contractors' storage yard is not an allowed use in a C-one zone. So you've got to deal with that issue first before you start, you know, advancing your planning board efforts further. So as a result of that, you know, there's two applications filed tonight. Obviously, the second one, we're hoping not to get to, which is a direct challenge of the building inspector's opinion. We're trying to skin the cat a different way in terms of saying, okay, if we accept for argument's sake that you find us to be a contractor's storage yard, is there a way that we can conduct our business with voluntary conditions? We're willing to submit ourselves to, to sort of take out the offending distinctions between those types of zoning definitions. So I know you're familiar with the definitions. Just indulge me for a second to sort of draw a comparative analysis to the two. So in the trade business category, you know, it indicates that it's for businesses that are providing trade services directly to the ultimate consumer. And they give examples such as electrical contractors, plumbing contractors, HVAC contractors, you know, sort of specialty contractors in that category. And they specifically exclude landscapers and construction contractors because the intent behind the bylaws, it says, is that they were trying to dissuade outdoor storages of materials. However, you have to draw that comparison to the contractor's storage yard, which gives further directive as to what is captured there. And I think really what is captured there or the intent is to try to dissuade heavy site work contractors, large-scale constructors, the types of, those types of businesses that typically engender very heavy mechanical equipment. They specify bulldozers, front-end loaders, backhoes. I suspect large-scale dump trucks would probably fall into that category too. And they also talk about the exterior storage of construction materials. So what we've proposed is a variance to say, okay, you can qualify us as a contractor's storage yard, but we will voluntarily stipulate as part of the conditions of the variance that we will not have that heavy equipment and we will not have visible exterior storage of materials. Now, I want to draw the analogy a little bit further between John's business and the businesses that are identified in trade, in the trade category. If you think of just electrical contractors, HVAC contractors and plumbers, these guys all work out of pickup trucks, vans, box trucks, trailers. They all have some level of light equipment. They all maintain inventory of materials, whether it's HVAC units or boilers or electrical fixtures and things of that nature. We are more analogous with that than we are with a heavy constructor or a site work contractor. We are effectively what I would consider to be a light cosmetic trade contractor. We do siding, windows, roofing, gutters, cosmetic-type items. We work out of pickup trucks. We work out of vans, box trucks, trailers. We use light equipment, ladders, some small boom lifts. And we have an inventory of materials that typically are pretty job-specific. We have some things that are going to be in stock regularly for retail service. And then we have other things that may be job-specific, but we have the site to store them inside to the extent that there was any exterior storage, it would be in a pod or, you know, an enclosure rather than just the exposed materials. So I see no distinction between how John operates his business and how a typical electrician, plumber and an HVAC contractor would operate their business. We are not engaging in the offending portions, which are specifically excluded from the trade business deposition, definition and included in the contractor's storage yard definition. So really, the spirit and intent of the bylaw is met if we voluntarily stipulate to those two conditions of no heavy equipment and no exterior storage. We're going to have a retail showroom. Charlie touched upon that, you know, for samples of siding and, you know, windows and gutters and things. Retail use is allowed as a matter of right in the zone. We're going to have office space in the building. That's also allowed as a matter of right in the zone. It's really just the issue that I've brought to the attention. So it's effectively a third use on the site that if we condition ourselves, I think we fit squarely into the trade business and not into a heavy contractor or a site work contractor. Now, currently, you have a depressed residential structure on the site. I think we've become more conforming from a zoning perspective by moving into a commercial use rather than a residential use. Generally speaking, you know, the site is somewhat depressed. You're going to renovate the site with a beautiful new building, great landscaping, very aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood. You're going to have increased real estate taxes. You're going to have the benefit of all the excise taxes that come with all the vehicles that are associated with this equipment. You're going to have downstream economic stimulation because John's business draws upon support of lots of other local businesses there in terms of services, vendors. You know, they're complementary to each other. And I know right now he avails himself of a number of Plastow businesses as a support system for his ongoing operations. I think property values increase as a result of the revitalization, the renaissance of this parcel. You're providing new services in the neighborhood for Plastow town residents. You're providing employment opportunities. You know, John's looking to make this his flagship, a nice, clean, aesthetically state-of-the-art site for his business. Plastow gets to steal a business from where his present location is in Massachusetts and take it to Plastow for further economic development. And I think if you look at the neighborhood, generally speaking.
Hold on one sec. So he has a business in Havreau in addition to the Upper Main Street business?
Correct. So that's, that's moving to Plastow.
What's in Havreau presently?
That essentially this business, basically.
What's, what's in two thirteen Main Street presently?
Two thirteen, Charlie can speak to that issue right now. I think, I think there was some composition of business there. Charlie, I don't know if you're able to speak to that.
I think that's John's kind of, for lack of a better term, kind of halfway area. It's a staging area where he brings product in and brings product out. It's not a large site. It doesn't give him a lot of opportunity for storage there. But it is his New Hampshire area that he uses to, to service his, his client base. But it's obviously not his, his main operation. It's his lesser operation and it doesn't really suit him very well as far as being able to bring clientele to, to have a showroom, that sort of thing.
Nor, nor is he making, wanting to make it be that. You know, this is a clean slate, a brand-new parcel, looking to make it be a, you know, flagship operation for him, something that the town can be very proud of. And I think, I mean, you all live in the town. You know one twenty-five very well, a lot better than I do. I certainly have driven one twenty-five several times in my lifetime. But, you know, the reality is that, is that's your main economic thoroughfare out there. And it's dominated predominantly by various businesses. I provided you a Google Earth map that sort of flags a lot of them that are in the area, ranging from MB Tractor to Paquette Howard Electrical Contractors and restaurants and storage and everything else. So the reality is, is that commercial zoning creep is kind of taken over versus the residential use, which is on the site right now. So I think the redevelopment of the site fits into the zoning district. I think it fits into the neighborhood. My understanding also, I don't, I haven't specifically looked into this. I think there are other contractors and roofing companies that are in the C-one zone. I don't know what their approval process has been in the past or what those issues are. I was told absolute roofing is in the area. Build-it construction is in the area. So I think it's a good fit. So just briefly touching upon the areas, not contrary to the public interest. Again, I think that's a function of a lot of the points that I just made. Spirit intent of the ordinance is preserved and I think it is by virtue of voluntarily, voluntary conditions that we're willing to impose upon the site. It will do substantial justice here because I think, you know, a lot of the cases I cite talk about residential parcels that have been subject to the commercial zoning creep and allowing them to do something commercial in a residential zone to fit into the neighborhood. I think that applies here. Property values are not going to be diminished by a brand-new, redeveloped economic project on that road. They'll be increased. And I think it is an unnecessary hardship to the applicant if the variance isn't granted because effectively you're, you would be forcing a square peg into a round hole in terms of the use definitions. I really feel that without outside storage and without heavy equipment, we really do fit into a trade business definition rather than a contractor's storage yard definition. So therefore, you know, if we take those issues out, I don't, I'm hoping that the board doesn't want to just, you know, look to the literal language of the bylaw only. And perhaps they, you know, think that this is a tolerable deviation from the literal language of the bylaw, essentially. So, I mean, I fleshed those arguments out in a lot greater detail in the five-page letter I gave you and I'm not going to bore you beyond that. But that's the legal mumbo jumbo I have for you on this for now. I know you don't want to be in your own night, so I'm happy to answer your questions.
Actually, you've avoided the legal mumbo jumbo considerably and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Just a point of reference for the board because Mr. Nikosia raised it, absolute roofing and build-it are both in the ICR district out on one oh eight.
Okay. Well, my, my apologies for that. That was information that was provided to me third. And as I mentioned, I didn't have a chance to investigate those, so.
Okay. Mr. Blanchett, are you still there?
Dee? He muted. Here he comes. He's still there. He's on, you're on mute, sir. There you go.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
That's okay. By the way, my name is Peter.
Mine also.
Mine also.
A lot of Peters in the room.
Anyhow, Mr. Blanchett, I was, I was just calling on you to get a maybe, to see if you wanted to amplify it all on the definition of a contractor's yard or defining this as a contractor's yard?
Yes, sir. I have to, in my position, you know, counsel was right. They are closely related, the two different definitions we're talking about here. However, you know, as you know, it's my job to enforce what's in the zoning book. And that's exactly what I've done. I found that the description that I have given, what, what was presented before me, that was the best call for us. So thus, thus they're here and now it becomes your decision, I think, to decide what was the best decision or can we make some kind of a variance to, to move this along?
Okay. Another question for you is, well, one of the stipulations by the applicant is that they will voluntarily comply with certain, certain items that aren't necessarily required. I guess, does your office have any opinion on whether at their present location there has been good compliance with the site plan and such?
I'm not in a position, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, to make opinions. However, you know, we do record and follow the record of the law and that's where I stand. There were some outstanding violations on the, I think you have it before you, on the lot that's presented now. And I gave a little bit of a couple of lines on my feelings, not my feelings on that, but what that,
Observations?
What that, what that means. However, no, I, I don't feel like it's my job to chime in or make an opinion like that. If they, if you approve something like their, their offering, it becomes up to them. We will make it part of the occupancy and then it becomes police work after that for my office.
Okay. Okay, thank you much. Appreciate your time. I hope I haven't taken you away from dinner.
Not at all. Thank you. Good to meet you all.
Folks, any questions or comments out there?
I just have a quick question. Looking at the site plan, sheet three, I can see the setback lines. And obviously, the original dwelling was well outside of the setback lines. But they're knocking the original dwelling down and building a new building in its footprint. Does that need a variance for all the setback?
I can answer that, Charlie Zilch. No, it doesn't. If you refer to the zoning ordinance on pre-existing uses and in this particular case, and I also had put this in front of the building inspector, Mr. Blanchett as well, to discuss. There's a caveat in there. If the use is changed to the conforming use, which is in this commercial one zone, a commercial use, then the footprint can remain as is.
Okay.
If it was to be, if it was vacated for, I believe, more than a year and you wanted to use it again for residential, then you had to conform.
Yeah.
Chairman, it looks like you want to say something.
Who?
I thought John Bliden was getting ready to say something.
I'm just looking at this and I'm just wondering, because there's an area for commercial vehicles and trailer parking. And I know at the other site, there's the boom bucket trucks and with the extensions up. And I was just wondering if any of those were going to be parked on this site.
Well, I think my, I'll let Charlie weigh in on this too, but I look at, you know, the small boom lifts, which are fairly compact, are used to, you know, reach the heights of homes and stuff when you're replacing windows and siding. I don't look at that as heavy equipment. I look at that as, you know, equivalent to a trailer. Again, I focus on your use definitions. And, you know, they specifically call up bulldozers, front-end loaders, backhoes. I'm thinking heavy dumps, cranes, you know, things of that nature. I, you know, boom lifts are used, small bucket trucks are used by electrical contractors, by HVAC contractors. A lot of these HVAC units are on roofs. Again, I think what we use for that type of equipment is analogous to the trade equipment and not heavy equipment of this intended by the literal language of the contractor's storage yard. So I do think.
That's my understanding as well.
Yeah. My, my understanding is that, you know, some of those things will be over here. You know, the only time I can expect anything with a scoop on it is maybe when they're doing some snow removal on the site, you know, during the winter or something. But other than that.
Well, they seem to be stored with the, because we've had problems before, questions about it. They seem to be stored with the booms out and they're visual for, for, you know, down the street. And, you know, the definition of heavy equipment might be different to somebody living there, there.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'm just curious, curious about it because I do see them at the other site. So will they be staying at the other site or moved up here?
I, you know, if you want to condition that the booms have to be when they're parked, have have to be not extended, you know, so as to not interfere with people's, you know, aesthetics or view or something like that, I, I think that would be reasonable.
Also-
Also, I, before Charlie, you chime in, I, you know, I, I also think you kill, you kill two birds with one stone here. I think you, you cure whatever your concerns are with this other site, you know, to be enhanced by the creation of this site. Charlie?
Yeah, and, and the other thing is to consider too, John, is there's an area for parking that's going to be located behind the warehouse, and that could be dedicated space for those kind of, for that kind of equipment, and keep the parking that's going to be visible from 125 right along, you know, that parallels 125, keep that for the commercial vehicles and the customer and employee parking instead.
I think that would be a reasonable condition as well.
All right, because I know, I, I don't know about anybody else on the board, but I have heard complaints about that from the other site, and in the, in the original intent on the other site, that stuff wasn't supposed to be there.
Well, again-
So I don't want to see anything like that happening here.
I understand those comments, and I, I, those are all, those are legitimate comments. I guess all I can say is, you know, looking to be a good business neighbor to the community, to the town, to the neighbors, and, you know, having a reasonable condition about having those lifts parked in the back and not fully extended, those are reasonable conditions that the applicant, again, is looking to work with the board here to try to balance everybody's interests.
Yeah, especially since I see a house that abuts that parking area, and I don't know if the people who live in that house, you know, have, you know, chimed in on how they feel about this.
Dee, do you have any letters from the butters?
I, I don't have any letters from the butters opposing the project. I don't, oh, the other Pete, I'm sorry.
Oh, Dee.
Oh, Dee, I'm sorry. I thought you said Pete. My apologies for number one.
No worries.
I, all the butters were notified. I have nothing that has come in by either email or through US mail.
Thank you.
Been a long day, I apologize.
All right, well, that's all I have. I, I just think maybe, you know, storing the, those trucks with the booms down as much as possible probably would be nice.
Makes sense.
Well, I-
About anybody else on the board if they feel like that?
No, and that's the thing, John, I agree with, I mean, those things, they, they store them extended to jam more, more of them in. When the boom's down, you can't squeeze as many into the parking lot. And I think when you have ten or twelve lulls extended, they're just as unsightly as if you had a backhoe or a dump truck sitting there. Actually, more so because the forty feet's going to extend over any fencing or privacy fence that you have. Just like the Main Street location, you drive by there, all you see is extended booms. Very unsightly. So, I mean, I don't know, that's, we haven't talked about any of the non-compliance in the past. I mean, I just don't want to see this site turn into Main Street.
Yeah, and that's a message I, I want to convey loud and clear. We're not turning this site into Main Street. This is a new project where we're hoping to cure, you know, those issues, and, you know, we're open to these reasonable conditions that we're talking about.
I hear you. And I, I hear our building inspector, but, you know, the, the fact of the matter is we have multiple years of non-conformances that have never been fixed at the other site. And I have a, a belief issue, a trust issue on this. I mean, it's, and it wasn't, it's multiple. Not one or two. Multiple.
And again, I-
I wasn't going to bring it up until we went into the session, but between April of 2018 to May of 19-
Well, Gary, I just give him a chance to explain it. Because once we go into deliberations, they can't tell us about.
Right.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ingham, I didn't hear your comment.
My comment was, between April of 2018 to May of 2019, there have been eight final notices of compliance issued to the Main Street property, and if you look at the pictures in the back that's included in the packet, it's, it's pretty disturbing that could possibly happen right on Route 125 on a much bigger scale because of the much bigger piece of property. And I believe somebody already said it, it makes a trust issue.
I am personally unaware of those, those violation notices, so those, those issues, so I'm not in a position to be able to talk about that tonight. What I'm trying to do, I, is, you know, propose a new economic development project, put some reasonable safeguards in place so that if there is a trust issue in the future, you know, the building inspector has some teeth as the zoning enforcement officer to address those types of issues on this site. And again, I'm here to try to work cooperatively, cooperatively for the board, which I think, on a project which is a win-win for both sides, for all the reasons I stated before. And again, you know, no exterior, visible exterior storage of materials, no heavy equipment, moving the lifts into the back, having them not be extended, you know, the adequate buffering and screening, open to all of those types of, those types of conditions and issues. I don't want to just doom this to fail, predict failure here. I, I want to have the board look to try to predict success. And I, I guess I'm asking for the board to give it a fresh look for, for what this project is going to be and not doom it comparatively to this other piece of property.
Quick question. A couple of times you've talked about exterior storage and corrected yourself to say visible exterior storage.
Yeah, I mentioned-
Who, who is going to decide what's visible and where it will be? Because it looks like on the other site, people decided putting up fences and hiding stuff behind fences made it not visible.
Yeah, no, that's not my intent, so exposed materials. So for instance, if there were a storage pod, you know, a sort of a trailer box type thing that, that would have some materials inside of it, you know, for security purposes, we don't, the applicant really shouldn't want materials exposed, you know, either for a variety of reasons. So I, when I say exterior storage, it is materials that are to the open air, that would be on the site. It wouldn't be hiding them behind a fence. So if a working steering would be in a container.
Yeah, and, and you can see on the site plan, we do have a, a couple of proposed portable storage units on there.
Right.
And so that is also intended to keep everything undercover and out of sight.
So I'm not trying to be cute, I'm just qualifying it because of those storage.
Well, in regards to storage containers, there's storage containers on the Main Street site, and is all kinds of stuff on the outside of the containers, not on the inside. So I don't know, like I say, I just, I'm not trying to, I, I, I don't want to do anything to fail, but, you know, you can put safeguard, you can put rules, regulations, but if they're broken and they're not dealt with, you know, what's to say this wouldn't happen? And I hate to keep going back, but it is what it is. That site exists, it's non-compliant, and nothing's been done to correct it. And, and like John said, this is just going to be a bigger scale with, with the opportunity to, you know, be in non, you know, non-conformant a larger scale. That's, that's, that's my only glitch here, you know? There was no, there was never any effort made on the old site. So you can put as many safeguards as you want, but if you're unanswered and you send letter after letter, the points move. That's just my feeling. Anybody?
Well, what if, you know, again, I'm, I'm kind of operating hamstring right now because I, I don't have the intimate knowledge of the other site that, that you gentlemen have.
And I understand that, I get it. You, you're, well, you know, I've got to mention, I think the applicant really should have made you, his attorney, aware of that. This is a big deal.
Yeah, again, you know, you, my, the applicant is looking to invest this substantial sum of money here to redevelop this site. So there is by no means any appetite to spend that kind of money to create a non-conforming situation or a offensive situation. We're trying to create a very positive situation here, and again, that's why I made the comment earlier about killing two birds with one stone. I think if this site is redeveloped as it's proposed, for this particular occupant, it likely cures the issues that you're having with the other site. Because of the size, because of the capabilities of this site, you know, the applicant is hearing loud and clear the board's concerns about the other site and the fact that there's a lack of trust right now. The building inspector is hearing that. There's going to be conditions on an approval, and there's a process for zoning enforcement, as you all know it. I mean, there are cease and desist letters, there are legal actions and things. I'm not saying that that's what we want to do. We don't want to be on the bad side of the town anymore. We want to be a flagship business in this area. That's the goal.
Well, you know, it's, it's great, I understand what you're saying, and, but at the end of the day, it's very expensive for the town to, you know, to do enforcement. It's, it's even more expensive for the town, and frankly, something that Plastow does very infrequently, to take somebody to court. You know, part of, part of, part of me is asking about making a stipulation that says if we have to take you to, if you exercise this variance and we end up having to take you to court for non-compliance, you end up paying.
I, again, I, that's a reasonable, that's a reasonable condition.
Dee, please make sure that's in the minutes.
I mean, the court has discretion to award attorney's fees to a, to a victor anyways under general law, but-
I understand, but that rarely happens.
I would agree with that.
Okay. So you just said, you just said you're okay with that stipulation?
I think it would have to be viewed as a reasonable condition.
That, thank you. Hey Pete, I got something else for you. What if, what if we had, is another condition is Main Street was to be completely cleaned up? Before they, before they can move forward-
Okay.
-with this project.
All right, here's what I'd like to do, i- if you would indulge me. I want to get up to speed on what the current non-compliant issues are on the other property, okay? Because I want to be able to speak to how those issues are going to be addressed prospectively, and be able to speak in detail and give the board sufficient comfort, because I, I really, I don't want that, I don't want this project exclusively looked at through the lens of this other property. I want this looked at as a new, positive development for the community, okay? So what I'd like to do, if the board would indulge me, is if we have the opportunity to continue this to your next meeting, that gives me-
We can do that.
Okay, so just hear me out. That gives me an opportunity to get up to speed with whatever the current violations and non-conforming issues are on the other site. I want to be able to speak to you the next time about how they will be addressed, and I also want to talk with the applicant about what we would consider to be reasonable conditions in the day-to-day operation of this site that would be functional for us, economic for us, and also, you know, acceptable to the board. So, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to try to bum rush this through, and I don't want you to push back on me because I'm not operating with a full hand of cards. You know, I want, this is a great project, and I know it's going to be a successful project, and I know you're going to be pleased with it, so I don't want to jeopardize the chances of an approval here because I'm operating with a lack of information. So I'd like to have the opportunity to continue, understand the issues, come back with a proposal to remedy those, and come back with some reasonable conditions about day-to-day site operation that would be palatable to everybody, and try to earn your trust again as we move forward. Similarly, while we're trying to achieve a variance, I think it also makes sense to continue the next hearing, which is the appeal of the administrative decision, because we don't need to get into that dirt fight if we're going to be able to resolve it by putting our heads together and coming up with a plan here. So if that would be acceptable to the board, I would, you know, request the board to entertain a continuance. Charlie, what are your thoughts before I turn it over to the chairman?
No, I couldn't agree more. I think it gives you the opportunity to, to work with the, the applicant and then, you know, and, and to come up with a solution, I think that would work for everybody here. Like you said, it's a, it's a good plan, it's a nice site, I think it's be a great place for him to showcase, but I certainly understand the issues created by the Main Street site, and for him to, to act on that, I think, in good faith, would be, would be a wonderful thing here.
I've had the benefit of sitting on a lot of these municipal boards in my time in my own area out here, so, you know, I understand all the points that you're making, and I, I take them all serious, and I also want to be able to give you due consideration to those points. I'm not going to give you the usual lawyer tactics. I'm looking at this as a public-private partnership here to try to achieve something that solves a variety of issues and brings forth a great project to your town.
So if you're asking for a continuance of this case and the next, I think I have to ask the, I think we have to go to a vote on the board on that?
That is not clear. You can just, you do not need to vote on it, you can just declare that this is continued to the next meeting, which would be January 7th, but you do have to state the date and time.
Rest of the board good with that?
Yep.
We'll continue, we'll continue this to the 7th, and, you know, that's after Christmas and New Year's. I do hope all of, you know, all of you guys out there, Peter, Charlie, the applicant, I hope you guys have a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and these weird times we're in.
Yeah, same, same to all of you. Everybody stay happy and healthy and happy holidays to everyone, and I appreciate your time tonight.
Yeah, let's, let's hope we can all, all of us can get together again on the 7th.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and especially thank you, Dee. I appreciate all your help over the years.
Thank you very much, Charlie.
Okay, so call this, well, see if it's been continued. Onto other matters. So we've been sued by the Anthony's, Anthony's versus EBA. We used Attorney Charlie Cleary as, for advice earlier on, and he has been involved in this whole Anthony and pro-quip thing. The planning board seems like he's, knows the issues very well, and I guess, I guess I'd like the board to allow him to represent us in this matter. Yeah, I have no wishing. I'm good on that.
I'm with me.
Yeah, I, I, I think he gave us good advice the time, you know, the last time we needed to chat with him about a very similar thing, and I'm very happy going forward with him. Gee, do we need a formal vote or just make it so?
I think Charlie would appreciate a, a formal vote on it. So it'd just be a simple vote to ask that Attorney Cleary represent the zoning board in the matter of the Anthony's versus the zoning board.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
And we'll start with Gary, Gary Ingham.
Yes.
Jim Unger?
Yes.
Peter Biwo?
Yes.
Dan Lloyd?
Yes.
Don Blinn?
Yes.
Two other little treats in your folders that I delivered to you. One is the final copy of next year's calendar suitable for framing, and it's on all the best refrigerators out in Placeta. So you have that available for you. And I also have a copy of the board's bylaws. I really appreciate it if everybody could take a hard look at those and see if you have any suggestions for amendments. I do have a couple of my, of my own that have come up along the way that I'd like to at least bring to the board's attention to take a look at, at a future meeting. But if you have something else and you can send it to me via email, we can hopefully have the discussion all on the same night.
And this is a particularly good time, I think, to take a look at the bylaws because, you know, some of us, like, like Dan and I in particular, and, and Gary have been kind of living under this one set of rules and not really thinking much outside the box about them for a number of years. Whereas now we've got some relatively fresh blood in, in Jim and John and Barbara. Well, Barbara is kind of a mixed bag. She, she's been in a long time, and then she's been off for a long time, now she's back. So we appreciate, appreciate inputs, you know, and questions, if, if not suggestions, just questions. Why do we do it this way? Why don't we do it some other way over the next few weeks?
Dee, I have a question for you. On this packet you sent me, on the plans, I got this note that says, "Do not toss this, please." Is this from you or is this from something that just got stuck on there?
No, it's from me. I, I particularly need you to hold on to those plans. Those are the plans for 190, particularly now that it's been continued.
I, I've just begun a long one.
Even after decision, just in case they decide, if it doesn't go their way, and they decide that they want to move up, I'd like to have the plans available.
Okay. Anything else, Dee?
No, that's it.
Okay, then, anything else, gang? Clear this meeting over. Would you ask, would you ask the-
7:44.